That's more I've had to hit that. I'm glad all of y'all are here. Thank y'all for coming. This is our regular monthly meeting. Alderman are present. But at this time, I would like to recognize Pastor Brooks personally leads us in prayer and then Alderman Powell will lead us into pledge allegiance. Um, I never tell Pastor Brooks how to pray. That would be silly. Uh, but there are three special intentions we have tonight. As you may know, Alderman Bates recently lost her father at a relatively young age. William Hall, uh, here in our planning and zoning department was pretty seriously injured in an accident at his home or camp, and he's very fortunate to be here. And Chris Buckner, um, in our public works department's wife has recently had some health issues for which she's recovering. So if we would just all keep those in your prayers tonight, Pastor Brooks.
May we all bow. Gracious heavenly Father, as we come before the altar of our head and number hard, we first want to just say thank you for all of our blessed. And then Father, we come asking that that we petition and throw in grace concerning those that are going through bereavement, sickness, and other things that may be, uh, causing troubling problems in their life. We pray for health and strength right now. Father, that you will bless them along those lines. We pray for this mayor, this board of aldermen, and this city and all of the, of its departments that represent it. We pray for these young people that are here tonight. We ask that you will bless them in the homes that they come from. And Father, we just pray that all of us will be on one accord, uh, and that is loving one another, uh, uh, so that we may live a life in peace, harmony, joy, and happiness. We ask these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Attention, salute, a pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the God of liberty, peace, and justice for all.
All right, thank you both for that. All right, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kellum for item number three A.
Yes, sir. So I would like to introduce to the board, uh, our new deputy city clerk, Chastity Pickett. Um, Chastity joins us from the state. She works for the Department of Education and she's going to bring a wealth of knowledge and motivation for election to our city. So I wanted to welcome her and introduce you guys. And she needs to take a moment off. Please.
All right.
You too.
If you raise your right hand. Peter. I, Chastity Pickett.
I, Chastity Pickett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office.
From holding the office.
Of Deputy City Clerk One.
Of Deputy City Clerk One.
For the city of Buckstap.
For the city of Buckstap.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bates, item three A.
Yes, sir. It's the coach of the Germantown High School Cheerleaders, cheerleaders, plus cheerleaders. With the band and maybe a few, I don't know. Y'all have, are all the seniors captains or you have captains?
Um, we have one of our captains.
One of them? Y'all can come up here for a second and then, and then I'm gonna get all of y'all to stand and we're gonna get a picture. Okay, so we're here today because we wanted to celebrate the Germantown Cheerleaders. They recently placed first at the UCA Magnolia Regional Cheerleading Competition. So we have a motion today to celebrate them on their success and to wish you guys near more successes in the future. Uh, right now, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution as written.
Okay, Ms. Bates made a motion. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Slade seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Would you like to kind of give us like a brief description of how, how often you guys had to practice and what it kind of took to get the routine together to do the place first?
Oh, yes. Um, I'm assistant coach, just to clarify. And the head coach could not be here, so I don't want to take more credit than I should there. Uh, we have an awesome choreo, uh, choreographer, Katie Hardy. She is so good. She's worked with the kids for your town. Um, everybody here puts in a whole lot of work. We practice very often. Um, and I'm just really proud of our entire team, girls and guys like, um, for the hard work that they put in. Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Germantown Cheerleaders. Come up to the, stand back here, all the girls and.
Back here.
Yeah. We're gonna get a quick picture.
I'll have the speech in a minute. Just make two rows.
I mean, y'all can like, hey, go. I could do double legs. Take one.
I don't know. Hey, y'all keep going as much as you can.
Hey, can somebody fly behind Sarah and Ellen over there? Can you make some more space?
Yep, there we go. Y'all can go in here too.
They're all posed.
Like you keep great. One, two, three. Oh, wait. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Y'all don't have to leave. All right. Alderman Powell with three C.
You have the eighth grade girls basketball team? I want you all to come on up, girl. Lakers as many as y'all was. They brought all, they brought them right over. And then, uh, who's the coach? Well, um, on behalf of the mayor, board, and citizens of Buckstap, I just want to say congratulations to me and, uh, Melissa Jenkins.
Thank you.
Awesome, uh, just over the last, um, several months. Playing that class, you, um, ninth grade, ninth grade, well, high school, um, work. I would say that Buckstap's a good handful of schools when it comes to sports. Um, so, yeah, y'all make us proud. Uh, we have a resolution here from the board and the mayor to recognize, um, y'all for your eighth grade uh, girls' basketball team, uh, whereas, uh, Germantown High School eighth grade girls' basketball team uh, recently competed for the Little Six Championship. And whereas the Germantown High School eighth grade girls' basketball team were victorious over Madison Middle School and won the 2024 Little Six Championship. Um, therefore, here it being resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Buckstap, that the city of Buckstap wishes to recognize and congratulate the Germantown High School eighth grade girls' basketball team on winning the 2024 Little Six Championship. So once again, congratulations and Mayor would like to make a motion.
Mr. Powell made a motion. Is there a second for adoption of this resolution?
Second.
Mr. Slade seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Congratulations.
Y'all come behind and get a picture?
We're at the hardware. They're about to make a one.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir. We could have the ninth grade boys' basketball team come on in. Y'all come on up here, girl. Yes, sir. Y'all come on in.
Y'all just follow in right here.
More y'all.
There are a lot taller than me.
And there was a ninth grade, I don't remember, but I did call some. I don't know. It was probably one of them was the lady. Well, kind of like I said with the ladies, um, you know, I think we're in pretty good hands when it comes to school athletics with, uh, Germantown and the city of Buckstap. Um, and it was had the ninth grade football team, we've had the eighth grade basketball team, we've had the bands, we've had the high school cheerleaders, um, and now we need to recognize you guys. So, um, you know, on behalf of the mayor, the board, the citizens, uh, just want to congratulate y'all on winning the, um, ninth grade boys' basketball team on winning the Little Six Championship. So it's awesome and uh, y'all done a great job and made everybody proud. So, um, no pressure, but, you know, y'all move up next year. But y'all bring a wealth of knowledge and y'all got that championship experience. So, um, hopefully we see y'all next year with the high school team, uh, do the same thing. But we have a resolution here, um, whereas the Germantown High School ninth grade boys' basketball team uh, recently competed in the Little Six Championship. And whereas the Germantown High School ninth grade boys' basketball team were victorious over Big Stark High School and won the 2024 Little Six Championship. Therefore, here it being resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Buckstap, as follows, the city of Buckstap wishes to recognize and congratulate the Germantown High School ninth grade boys' basketball team on winning the 2024 Little Six Championship. Um, so Mayor would like to make a motion?
All right, Mr. Powell made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations. All right, Ms. Kellum, we have, uh, added child presented items. Another item, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So as you all know, board, uh, we went through our official green and purple audit for the summer. Um, this was about a week on event. It's very, very stressful. Um, as you can imagine, it's a lot of moving parts, a lot of stuff, you know, point, documentation, our auditors. This is a lot of work. So I really want to take a moment and congratulate Scott and Janet. You'll stand up, please. I know it's a very big event. If y'all, um, you know, I, I am so grateful to you guys. You guys, uh, really worked so hard through the audit process. Don't you cry. Y'all worked so hard through the audit process. Uh, you know, we are such a good team. Um, I, I know that a lot of days, it's, it's a lot of busy, busy parts in my office. Um, but we could not do it if we did not work as a team and as one. And, and I just can't thank you enough for all your hard work here in the past. Y'all kept me sane too. So, um, I really like, you guys are phenomenal. I could have asked for better clerks along, but I think it's just, of course. I just wanted to let you guys know, like, I'm so proud of every member of you. And I do believe, um, you're gonna have no findings and, uh, a very positive, uh, report. So, um, we've gotten a great feedback from our aldermen. So I just wanted to let you guys know. She'll be a part of it.
And the ladies for the Christmas.
Yes, and we'll recognize them in February.
All right, item number four is the consent agenda. Hopefully yesterday you all got the email from Ms. Kellum, which added one small item concerning S A B C flexible spending account funding. With that addition, I would ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Mr. Taylor made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Powell seconded. You're all in favor?
All right.
All right, item number five is the monthly budget report.
There's a budget amendment.
Okay, I see.
Yes, sir.
Item five A. There's a resolution to adopt an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 fiscal budget. Are there any questions about that proposed amendment?
I have a question of three D.
We're on five A.
Well, no, I'm on five A. I'm on the content of number three.
The memo?
A memo.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. On the memo itself. Um, the fifty thousand, it looks like it's. So we are moving fifty thousand over to cover the final invoice?
Yes, essentially in that second legislative allocation that we received from the state, it's seven hundred fifty thousand. We had budgeted only on the expenditure side in the capital outlay, um, categories. So what we need to do is take fifty thousand out of capital outlay, move it to contractual services to cover the remaining architectural bills. And then, once those are done, we'll move it back, whatever the remainder is, contractual. All right. So that's just to cover the last few bills from, uh, D and D in architecture.
So when it just like getting those by March is called?
By March?
By March.
Okay. All right. That's all.
So we've got to give more, still more, I guess, billing invoices coming.
Yes, we do have the, uh, the remaining benchmark construction costs, uh, invoices that we're expecting over the next two months.
We going in, I guess, finish this up in, within our budget or we know it's going to be overrun?
We're not really sure yet what the benchmark invoices looking like. Um, they've given us a rough estimate of about three hundred forty thousand remaining. Um, so it looks like it may be a little over, but that's something that we'll know more about next meeting.
Sure. All right, is there a motion then to adopt this budget? Mr. Taylor made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, now monthly budget reports and the bank reconciliation, those are FYI matters. Are there any questions about that? Having no questions, we'll move to item six, which we, uh, at the request of those involved, have agreed to table a proposed Buckstap ordinance so that additional information can be gathered. Hopefully we'll address that issue, uh, at the next monthly meeting. So that would move us to item seven. The discussion of the comprehensive plan. Alderman Slade.
Yeah, I asked, uh, we put this on the agenda just because we have a, got an update. And the last time, like, Mr. Watson, uh, came and met with us and discussed this, I guess, was back in the spring. And, uh, you know, he proposed a couple of things that, that he was going to be working on and everything, and we haven't heard from him since then. But I know he's been very busy, you know, other more pressing matters or whatever, but, um, the, the last time he came met with us, he was working on the architectural guidelines, whatever, for Germantown Village, I believe is what we were calling it. I didn't know if he's done any more work or, uh, anything along that line.
For, for that reason, and also because of the interplay with the ongoing, uh, annexation matters, this item would and could qualify for executive session. So it would be my recommendation that we take that to closed session to see if you want to discuss a part of it.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that. I'll mark that and we can do that, uh, for Miami. Ms. Kellum, you get there.
Yes, sir.
We'll move item seven A for a more thorough discussion. And so item eight, Ms. Ruth.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, first item is just a, um, it's just a spreadsheet of current grants. Uh, there's, there's some updates, um, that happened after I submitted my agenda items. If you look at that second line for equipment technology, that JAG fiscal year 2023, that award has come through. Uh, the implementation meeting will be February seventh at Public Safety Planning. I will be attending with Lieutenant Tucker. On the need my hazard mitigation and carries here. Um, but he sent me an email, uh, waiting for a transfer switch to install the generator. Um, on the block grants for Gluckstat Road and Calvin Station, the expanded funds, uh, that will not be reimbursed. That's part of our match, but for those numbers. And that's because, uh, reimbursement doesn't start until the actual construction period, and these are engineering, um, invoices is what those are. Is there any questions?
You, now, from my looking at this, it doesn't list any grants that we have applied for. Are there outstanding grants that we have applied for that are not listed?
There will be by the end of this month, and that's another agenda item. Um, the only one, um, I'm sorry. Yeah, there will be by the end of this month. Um, there's several in, that, that, um, that we're planning to apply for, um, another to FEMA or perhaps Homeland Security. Um, the new highway safety grant is due at the end of this month. This is just currently what we have right now.
Okay. So you mentioned here a couple that you've been applying for by the end of the month. And you'll be able to report that to us at the next meeting?
You will have changes. And what I'll do is they'll just be added to this list and all changes will be highlighted. So you'll know what the new stuff is.
Any questions on Ms. Ruth about current grants update eight A? All right, eight B.
The Health Council. Um, I, these were also not available when I gave my, um, when I submitted my agenda items. Thank you. We have, uh, two co-coordinators. The programming, programming coordinator is Leslie Whitey. She is the CDC. Uh, the events coordinator is Sheila Span. And she's the one that single-handedly put together the blood drive. Let's talk about the, uh, the five K, this map you have. This is tentative for March. So I'm shooting for March. It may be April before we can have the five K. But this is the, uh, this is the route that the five K will be, will go down, uh, on your map. And it will be a morning run.
Where's it gonna start? Which end of this, which end of this road?
That depends on, um, the solution we find for parking.
One likely to be around the Weisberg area. And there's a final hour at two minutes. It's exactly a mile and a half there, a mile and a half back. So it's a good start to finish it. We closed in on the road without.
I got you. So we'll start and finish at the same place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be a lead.
Chris, you're involved in that and getting this. Chief, chiefs, I'm sure the police department is involved in this too, Ms. Ruth. Make sure.
And fire as well.
Okay.
But we'll bring them in, um, so there will be, uh, in case a medical emergency happens on the route, we have a paramedic there.
Okay.
We'll, we're gonna work on that for closure and stuff like that. And, you know, get in touch with the business owners. Make sure everybody is aware.
How does it be promoted or advertised? I don't know, for maximum exposure?
Social media, Madison County Journal, uh, Business Alliance, uh, any community groups. And we'll make a list of those. Who's the name of the lady you said that was assisting, the doctor's fan? Leslie Whitey. Okay. So these individuals are helping with this event too? Mm-hmm. And as, um, there's several others on the, um, of course now. Um, Jake's wife did the flyer in front of you. She grabbed that.
Oh, the blood drive?
Yeah.
All right, that's great. Hopefully we get the news out and a lot of people participate. And hopefully everybody in the tournament will participate. I can't wait to see you, fun.
I guess you'll have walkers.
Yeah. Anything else with regard to eight B? All right, Ms. Ruth, eight C.
Okay, the road safety program, um, we're on, this is one of the ones that the, it's, it's coming up due, and so we'll talk about it more next month. This is just, this, this is a trust fund, and it's paid for through every ticket written throughout the country and territories. Um, and we will focus on mostly bike safety. This funding is for pedestrian and bicycles. But because the data I have is car on bicycle, not car on pedestrian, we will focus on bicycle. And that data comes from PD. But you will get, um, more information, including a detailed budget plan for next month's board meeting. So we'll talk about this again next month. But this is just what we're going for moving forward. And it's mostly providing. And it's mostly for lighting, and we talked about lighting last month too. There's a few areas here in Weisberg that get very dark.
Okay, last meeting, we talked about Mississippi Main Street and grant opportunities, that's what I was trying to recall. I don't see anything in here to update anybody on Mississippi Main Street.
I've called, I've sent emails, and I've gotten never replied to that. And I will continue to get that answer, that question answered for you, I just don't have it.
Okay, can I ever ask a question?
Yes, sir. On the bicycle safety part, is that, is that included possible signage that's put up on the railways?
Signage and ride. Yeah, we can incorporate that.
Okay.
This next item requires a vote.
Item number eight, D?
Eight, D, yes.
Okay.
Permission to submit a modification for our existing highway safety grant to add technology in the amount of approximately four thousand dollars, there is no match. And this is, the equipment is for speed enforcement, which is one of the three performance measures in this funding. The other two are seatbelts and child restraint. Ask permission to authorize all signatures for the modification and acceptance of that modification.
Okay, any questions about that?
So, is that number one, or number two, or both?
I'm sorry.
In your memo.
Yeah.
It's, that's specific to the grant we have now, the grant for next fiscal year is number two. And that also requires a vote.
Why are we modifying, why are we modifying at this point in time?
You can't modify until January.
Oh, okay.
Right, you can't modify in that first quarter of the grant funding period, that's right, you said that before, sorry. That's okay. All right, I'm assuming these require two different votes, if you want to ask for a form of order, you can go for all of them.
It does require two votes, so Ms. Williams has made a motion that we approve the modification to four thousand and twenty dollars, there's no match, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Slay seconded, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, now you want to move to item number two on your memo?
I would like to, and again, Mr. Park's vote. Permission to apply for and authorize all necessary signatures upon award of the fiscal year 2026 Police Traffic Services Grant. This is a continuation of our current grant, and will be the third year awarded.
How's that money used? I mean, some is earmarked for certain expenses, or?
This is for personnel and equipment, overtime, and some regular pay for police departments, and more enforcement equipment. In total, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, give or take a grand, and there is no match. Motion.
Ms. Williams made a motion to authorize that acceptance of that, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Ruth, thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, A, Ms. Kellum.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be brief. Just a few points that I want to touch on, obviously, as I mentioned before, we're waiting on FY '23 and '24 audit reports, but so far, we've had great positive feedback from auditors, with no warnings, no findings on the compliance side. So I think they're just shoring up the financials right now. Obviously, we started training a new deputy clerk as of yesterday, she's beginning on fixed assets and purchasing, and a little bit of elections starting next week, she's going to be attending the SOS certification training on elections. We will begin some of her HR training probably more toward March. We are also, I've been sitting on some interviews for Public Works, Main and Center, as well as PD's dispatch, so I think that we anticipate some hirings coming up in February and March for those positions. And then, of course, elections preparation is in full swing. You know, we're working on getting cooperation from the parties, the counties, and starting to qualify candidates, which started on the second of January, and will go to the thirty-first. And then we have some tight kind of deadlines and timeframes we've got to meet as far as, you know, printing ballots and whatnot, so... That's pretty much all I have right now, other than end of year, and we have to send our W2s into 99 by the thirty-first, so we're working on that too.
All right, any questions about, of Ms. Kellum about her general update? Okay, Mr. Monk, nine, B, you have anything to add to your privilege and transient vendor license report?
That part's pretty standard, I don't know if Zach can start rolling out the letters, weigh out some of that. I did, it was funny, because one of the people that's on that list, and I was saying, I named them, they happened to walk in the office, and so I'm fully unrelated, and I was answering their questions, like, hey, by the way, would you like to file for your perm's license? And they ended up doing it, so, I mean, it's, it's funny, because in the past, about a month, three random people that I'd never heard of, somehow I either found out about them, or they just walked into the office, and they, so that's good. So we're moving forward, thank you, Chris.
Questions of Mr. Monk?
Okay, the second question I would like to ask is about how many letters have been reached out to, how many has been sent?
Fifty-something?
Minus one, because they can't.
Any other questions of Mr. Monk? All right, Ms. Kellum, nine, C.
Yes, sir, I just need authorization to publish the budget amendment that you all just adopted on the PD station.
Okay, is there a motion?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Powell made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bates seconded, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, item nine, D.
This is just a reminder that I sent you all a Dropbox link to all of our policies, including our employee handbook, open meetings policy, blood records, travel, all kinds of internal policies that I would like for y'all to review, and if you have any feedback to please provide to me in the next month or so, ahead of the end of term, so that we can get those cleaned up.
She's inviting us to, to search for ways to correct these and fix them, and we need to do that as quickly as possible. So y'all take some time and look through those when you can, and if you find something, let her know so we can put it on the next box agenda.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, item nine, E pertains to appointment of municipal election commissioners and the setting of their compensation. As I appreciate it, please tell me if I'm incorrect. Alderman Taylor has nominated Mrs. Ann Prey, and Mr. Jerome Gentry, and Alderman Powell has nominated Mr. Jim O'Reilly, did I get that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so are there any other nominations for election commissioners in addition to those?
I have a gentleman, Paul Hardy, that would serve as an alternate in case someone else cannot serve.
Okay. So...
H A R T Y.
H A R T Y?
Yes, I'm right.
Okay. So I think probably the first thing I need to do is ask, is there a motion then to approve and appoint Ms. Prey, Mr. Gentry, and Mr. Rayly as the municipal election commissioners for the 2025 general election?
Make the motion, sir.
All right, Mr. Powell made the motion, is there a second?
Go ahead.
Mr. Taylor seconded, it's all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? And we just note for the record, Mr. Hardy's willingness to serve in case somebody is unable to complete their service, and we can come back and address that at the time, should that happen. We need to set compensation?
Yes.
For these election commissioners?
Yes.
What's the proposal?
In your memo, if you'll look on, I believe it's page two. The first section, it shows that, well, there's a couple of different compensations we have to set. We have to set poll worker compensation, which I would like to accomplish tonight as well, for their training, and then for election day duties. And then I would like to adopt the county schedule for the election commissioner pay, which is outlined in the second paragraph, I believe. I'm sorry, the first paragraph. So, the statute that was attached to your paperwork shows a hundred and ten dollars daily for election preparation, and they would not exceed five hours of work on that day, this is just prep only, not election day. Election day would be one sixty-five per diem for election day duties. So if you want to start with the election commissioners, that's what I would recommend based off of the county's pay schedule.
Okay, so a per diem of one hundred and ten dollars daily for election preparation, not to exceed five hours a day, and one hundred and sixty-five dollars per day for election day duties.
Yes.
There are motions to approve that fee schedule.
We make the motion.
Mr. Taylor made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Slay seconded, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, now, do we need this poll manager?
Yeah, so when I say poll worker, poll manager, I use them in a general way, we just need to set pay for the poll workers, training pay and election day duties.
Now, as I read the statute, it says poll managers are to be paid a minimum of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per election?
Yes, and you all have the discretion to add seventy-five dollars for a total, not to go over two hundred dollars for election day duties, that is up to the board's discretion.
This is separate from an election commissioner?
Yes, this is poll workers. They're the folks, the good folks that volunteer to work the polls on election day, six AM to nine PM-ish, you know, seven PM, they'll be closing and all that, so...
So these folks that work the election are poll managers? And the statute says they're going to be paid a minimum of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per election?
Yes.
Who selects those?
Yeah, so, John, you and I, who selects the poll workers?
Well, you mean until we get the agreements in place? The next paragraph in the memorandum talks about your executive committee agreements, and I was telling Ms. Kellum before we walked in here that Zach and Jeri are working with this this afternoon. We believe it's not necessary for the board to intervene to the agreement, because the city clerk's office has got statutory authority to intervene to those agreements. Therefore, we're not going to be asking y'all to vote, and we're going to advise y'all not to vote on that tonight. We would like to continue to meet with Ms. Kellum more in over the next day or two, schedules allowing, before she enters into it, so she can understand what they're going to do and what they're not going to do under the proposed agreement, because I don't think the poll workers can be selected until we've entered into that agreement.
Yes, but we can set compensation for them.
You can set compensation, I don't guess there's any provision against doing that.
Okay, so the statute says they're supposed to be paid a minimum of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per election, and then there's some additional compensation of twenty-five dollars for taking the boxes to the polling place and returning a box to the city hall after the election, and mileage, all of that is set forth in Ms. Kellum's memo, paragraph three, that begins on page one and goes on to page two.
Just to clarify, a returning and receiving manager can actually get twenty-five dollars to take the box to the precinct and then bring it back. So an extra twenty-five dollars is allowable under the statute. In addition to that, if you are traveling over ten miles, which I don't anticipate is going to happen with St. Joseph being our polling place, they're allowed to get mileage if they travel over ten miles, so that's to clarify that a little bit.
This is all statutorily provided, right? So, I guess the best way to do this is, I would ask, is there a motion for us to pay the statutory rate of the poll workers? All right, Mr. Taylor made the motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Powell seconded, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, and then, that gets us past nine, E, you agree, Ms. Kellum?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, as I appreciate what Mr. Scanlon just said, nine, F is unnecessary, because those duties are statutorily provided to the city clerk's office. It's not something that we need to vote on, and we've been advised by a legal counsel not to vote on it. So with that said, absent some objection from somebody, I will skip nine, F, and we will go to nine, G.
I actually have a comment, and it's about the, you know, F and G. First, I have a question. Historically, watching from here at county level, which involves every precinct, there has been a, a lot of discussion, it's a needed discussion, on what you have that agreement with the committees, under that agreement, being both committees, both parties, providing poll worker names prior to settlement, and in a verification process that they truly did show up to work and or train. Will the clerk have that authority also?
Well, what, they've sent some agreements that they have with the circuit court level that said, and I think Zach was working on converting those to the municipal level, but you could see from the email, I'm not sure, I won't saw it, that in this one, initially, there was some reticence to run the election, and from one of the parties. In this one, therefore, they said, we'll come and help you with some of the duties, some of the duties we're going to pass to the city clerk's office, take over. So, some of these duties, you mentioned poll worker training, for example, I mean, I think that's one of the things they said that they don't want to do for y'all this time around, and that's why we want to meet with Ms. Kellum a little bit longer before we enter into an agreement, so we can figure out how to kind of wrestle that, that bear. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking or not, I mean, the...
I understand some of it, if they've, they have...
They can do the full gamut of everything.
It's either all or nothing, the way I understand it, and that's been at county level.
What's being proposed for Gluckstadt right now is not all, but it's more than nothing.
I would just stress, thanks to what I've seen at the firm, and I'm not saying it happened here, but things happen. One of the lessons learned in other firms, and just watching meetings through the years, the dialogue, in attending meetings, is there really needs to be a, a good system of, you know, Mr. Smith training, Mr. Smith did show up to work, therefore, Mr. Smith does get paid. Not if somebody signed that name type stuff.
Yes, and if it's done by our office, which, you know, we're going to work with legal on, it will be done, all of the eyes will be done.
Only up and up, and I don't doubt that it will, but these things have happened.
I understand, and, you know, the one blessing that we do have is we have one precinct versus some other cities that have, you know, multiple, that, you know, they have to secure poll workers for them, and, you know, and it's a voluntary position, and they get paid a stipend, that's not much to be there for twelve hours, so it's hard finding poll workers.
Also, I've seen the voter roll a couple times the past few years, and you can ask for the voter roll and public information, some of it, not all of it, and by law, there are some things that, if on request, you can get. And I've asked for the precincts too, besides Set City of Gluckstadt or whatever voter. But there is a precinct that I think some of the, Pranshall Ridge, and some of the Endo Road individuals, they have a different precinct.
Yes, Anita was working on this as of last week with Secretary of State's office and my office, so we're, there also was an address range that was not showing up that has been phased now.
Right, right.
You know, this is just room you city, you know, they're kind of...
Yeah, first time they really get into the data there.
Yes, but I do have root-only access to the statewide election management system. You know, I work very closely with Anita's office, they've been wonderful, her and her, so I do anticipate that we'll be able to work this out.
And there are other precincts, and, you know, EFSCK, we've got to cover those boxes too, and how that happens.
It's, it's a lot of work for my, which we do quite a lot do.
Mr. Scanlon, we don't have an MOU to consider or approve from nine, G.
No, sir, no, I don't believe so, yeah, we were talking about that, yeah, you can put it on the agenda.
It was more of a discussion, I'm hoping to get one, maybe back there.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is the election going to be here, or does it physically take parties to set it?
It'll take place at St. Joe.
You need that allergy rental money, second, yeah. Usually, it's three hundred dollars per precinct.
Yes, that's details that I'm going to have to work out with.
Do we need to talk on that? We've got time for that.
We have time for that. And, you know, absentee voting would take place here at city hall, so, it's really, you know, considerations of running the equipment, you know, purchasing of all the materials, you know, election day signs, all the things that go with the precinct. So those are things I'm looking into here the next week or so. Yes, sir.
All right, item number ten, Mr. Hall.
Morning.
That was good, good. Welcome, first, I'm glad to see you.
It's good to be here.
It's good to be here. Um, I did have one correction to my general update. I ran these numbers, uh, working remotely, and I did have my notes at the time, and I missed one little check mark I should have broke when I ran that report. There were actually twenty-five inspections done, not twelve. So, I, I thought that was a little short on inspection count, but I didn't have my notes. But I double-checked that yesterday when I got back tomorrow, and it, it is twenty-five. But, um, overall, the month of December for a contract period is typically pretty slow with the holidays and everything, so we anticipated it being slower. And it was, and we've already seen a pickup. They've already got six items coming forward to P and Z this month. So, next month, we'll have a long list, I hope, of approvals coming forward, so.
Awesome, and, uh, Mr. Hall added an item in that email that I mentioned earlier via Ms. Kellam regarding, uh, a correction of a typo in an ordinance that was adopted. You want to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Um, there was an ordinance, um, for the rezoning of a couple of parcels of Highway fifty-one for ferrous metal recycling. Uh, it's the old M and C lot over there, um, which I noticed riding by this morning, they've already paved that driveway that they were going to. So they, they've done what they said they would. The typo in the minutes, everything is correct, and the P and Z minutes, everything is correct. And the actual ordinance that was drafted, um, it read that we were going from an R one to a C two, when it should have read R one to I two. But like I said, all the minutes for the board and the P and Z both state R one to I two. So this is just a approval of the correction of that typo.
I'm not so sure we need to vote on it, it's already been voted, but-
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to, here, whenever you're rezoning, you gotta have fifteen days notice and all that kind of stuff.
It's already, it's already been rezoned. The ordinance was adopted and it is reflected in the minutes accurately. What we have is a typographical error or scribbler's error in the actual form of the notice of, of the ordinance that I signed that, uh, Ms. Kellam entered into the record. I don't know that we need to vote on that.
I, I would just be a little reticent to vote on the ordinance because it would, you would be voting on a zoning action, and you've got to have all that process and things, so I mean, perhaps, I don't know, an acknowledgement that the typographical error is gonna be corrected at the administrative level by the clerk's office or something.
It's an administrative thing, the board's already approved the ordinance. It's reflected properly in the minutes, let's just correct the typographical error and move on.
And I think we can reflect in the minutes today if we acknowledge that.
Yes.
What would be our process to get the corrected version of, of probably C side?
She's gonna put it on.
I'll, I'll correct it and upload it tomorrow.
All right, Mr. Hall, is that it?
That's all.
Thank you. Any questions on Mr. Hall? Glad you made it, wag your backs.
It's good to be here.
All right, Mr. Buckner, item number eleven.
Good evening, board. Uh, we're requesting authorization for the board to approve us to advertise for term bids for asphalt. That would be picked up at the plant and also work that they do for us for the second half of that platform.
There are motions for authorization to advertise for term bids. Mr. Taylor made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Powell seconded. All in favor? All right, any opposed? Anything else for Mr. Buckner?
Uh, I did want to mention that we did get rid of paid in time at camp, pulled a lot of strings for us to be able to get that done. So we were able to finish out the cooperation agreement with the county, and we got all the streets paid, so we'll be able to get restructured through.
That's awesome.
Streets are they approved?
That's great.
Uh, we're gonna work on the final two subdivisions that need to be paid that are a little bit aged are Bear Creek and Bradshaw, I'll try to get those this year, we've already submitted the road list to the county, wait and see what they approve. Uh, but after that, we'll be through with all the subdivisions that need to be paid and call it up, we'll go on maintenance, we might have a restructure, so.
Any questions, um, Mr. Buckner?
Can you leave our rain on, um, and put your eyes on D and D dry?
Yes, that's a better, we're aware of, we're, we're just waiting on the asphalt. More than up for the asphalt, dude, that's gonna be more than we can do with coal patch bags. But we are aware of it, we're there keeping it up.
I don't know what causes it, nobody knows.
Uh, tree droughts, stuff like that, it just soaks up and starts splitting.
Okay, thank you.
Item chief, chief, uh, hey, item number twelve.
Good evening, board.
Most certainly.
Uh, few things, Mayor of the board, we had, uh, five hundred and two, this past month. We, uh, made thirty-two arrests within the, uh, point two, Mr. Mayor, ten felonies, seventy DUIs. Actually, I won the day. Uh, twenty-six accidents worked, and to this date, we've started doing a hundred and two more.
How many?
Two hundred and two. I think we decided on one.
Since January?
No, just we started keeping up with the day.
Oh, total, year to day.
Yeah. We keep up with how many, sorry. We've, uh, dispatch, we've, um, that is moving along great, I'll give you an update on this, uh, person. He did some interviews for four dispatchers, uh, even carrying and letting them go into dispatch, let them have the radio and put them on the spot, and I think all of them did well from what I heard, so. We're gonna probably move forward with hiring them at Fred's way. Still hadn't got, uh, a set date on when dispatch is gonna be up and running. We're, uh, Motor Row's gotta do the training, and we're still waiting on P staff, nine-one-one to be put in.
Is our only line at P staff through county, or do we have direct contact with that boss house?
No, we do, Kerry's the one that's been actually, uh, talking with them, you know, because of the strike they had a while back, it's been, been set back, Kerry's doing his best to try to get them to put us in next in line, but. So what it looks like is, you know, we gotta, we gotta get the dispatchers hired, and they gotta, we'll have to get them certified. We'll have to get them trained, Motor Row is gonna have to come and do a lot of training for, uh, us, as far as like, uh, RMS computers and fars and all of that, so. I think we're looking, uh, sometime maybe in April, hopefully, we go live, but hopefully for them. But unfortunately, a lot of it, we rely on somebody else, we're at the hand of, I can't even think of what I'm, first, yes, there you go. We're at the mercy of, unfortunately, other people, so.
Let me ask you about the PD building. Did the interior signage get installed?
Yes, sir.
It's all done?
It's done, yep.
And we still don't know anything further about the exterior signage?
According to them, it was finally signed off on, um, they, and they're supposed to send it to the, uh, the, uh, people who were doing the signage. So, we haven't got a time, how, how long it's gonna take.
Other problems with the building?
Actually, uh, and Kerry's been doing a great job of handling that, Kerry has many jobs.
But we pay him so much, he always-
Unfortunately, he works actually more than what we pay him for, so. But he, yeah, but, uh, we've got, uh, doors are almost done, we're still waiting on the stuff for the gates, um, kind of thing, whatever. Lot of the door lock in the back that was supposed to keep pressure from going out, they did replace that. So, for, for the most part, we're, we're getting it there, we've only got a couple of things left, the hot water heater, I don't know, well, they came and installed it and then found out the electrician had it, so, so the electrician's gonna come back with the dirt tomorrow. Tomorrow, hopefully, we can get that going, but the only thing we have now is cold showering, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, you want to add anything to that?
Uh, they're, I mean, they're staying on top of the scheduling that, uh, Willie, the benchmark, you know, they're quite a bit. Uh, he and I stay pretty close communication, um, on everything, uh, it's just a matter of getting big schedule. Uh, AT&T, part of AT&T is like Chief said, they had that strike. They had all this stuff scheduled, and they had that strike through them, and part of that I found out was Capitol Police built a new nine-one-one center, uh, which is pretty big, and working with Jackson nine-one-one and that has been a major job for them. And so I think they're nappy down there and a lot of that, so it's kind of pushed everything back. Uh, they do have a fire run to the building port, uh, we have the power in their form, so, uh, hopefully, when they get to us, they won't play along with them to do their part.
The transfer switch for the generator, any idea?
It's supposed to be here the twenty-third, is what I've been told. Uh, so once, uh, once it gets here, they'll bring the generator outside it, uh, hook that, that's probably gonna be a several-day job, uh, running all that cable and all that up. Once we get it all installed, then I'll contact Mima, uh, and let them know, they'll come out doing an inspection. I've already done one quarterly report for the grant that's required, uh, kind of let them know where we are. Uh, so we're, we're good there, uh, as far as the grant goes.
Okay, great.
Also, we've still got a few leaks, every time it rains, we find a new leak, but it's not, and you took them out and they fixed them, so. The leaks that we had in, when it rained, at least they're fixing them, but for some reason, we find new leaks, so. Were you gonna say something, John?
No, I'm so sorry, I was pointing to somebody else.
Oh, I know you were.
No, excuse me, I didn't mean to.
But, yeah, other than that, we're moving along with the building.
Okay, anything else in your general update?
Uh, no, sir, I have to, I have to think of.
All right, you want-
Well, yeah, I'm getting this stink out from Wendy, so. Thank God, thank God, thank God for her, I wanted to bring up the thing with the, uh, metal detector.
Okay, but hold on, we, we, we were gonna go to twelve B and approve advertising for the posting of the job description.
Yeah, that's for a part-time dispatcher, or we may, we're gonna hire one, maybe two, one, we need at least one.
Request post job description and advertise in the beginning interviews for dispatch position.
Yes, sir.
That's a part-time?
That's part-time, yes.
Okay, and you want permission of the board to advertise for that?
Yes, as you know, I, well, I don't know if y'all are familiar with dispatch, a lot of times they are, it has a pretty high turnover sometimes. It can be pretty hectic, uh, you know, sometimes they chase the money and all that, so we want at least, and you know, when you've got four dispatchers working twelve-hour shifts, and they take off, take vacation or sick day, you only got, you gotta replace that, so, you know, I think part-time dispatch would, uh, would help with that. And it would be also cheaper to pay in overtime.
All right, is there a motion then to authorize the posting or advertising for this part-time position?
Motion.
Mr. Bates made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, twelve B carries, now you wanted to talk about the, uh, metal detector.
Yes, sir, uh, we've been just using the one, and that's been working pretty good with some. We had an incident the other day where, um, the judge didn't feel safe, and we had, uh, really what it come down to was Kyrie was, uh, late, running late, and we didn't have, we forgot to put somebody there to, at the door, so. I think that, you know, and the way things are going in the world now, or, I think it's best for us to go ahead and get a metal detector to put in.
Yeah, so the rest of the story is that I had a meeting with the judge who brought courtroom security to my attention. He sees the need to make sure we have two bailiffs on duty anytime. Court is in session, one bailiff, uh, at the front of the courtroom, one at the rear of the courtroom to monitor who comes in and out, and also a metal detector. And I haven't been in every courthouse in the state of Mississippi, but I've been in a lot of them, and they all have metal detectors. We have an obligation to protect judges, to protect the staff, the litigants, even the defendants and lawyers, uh, who are working in the courtroom, and so I asked the chief to come up with this quote for the metal detector, and that's why he did it. And, you know, look, we didn't budget for a metal detector, this is a five thousand dollar item, so we're gonna have to find the money in the budget for it, and chief and, uh, Ms. Stephanie have worked hard to try to come up with how we're gonna pay for that. Chief, do you have come to a conclusion or a resolution to that?
Well, actually, we have, and thanks, thanks to you, Mayor, I got, I got five extra thousand dollars back from my training budget, so. I may not even, I may not even need stuff, so. I'm trying to do it on my own, so.
We're gonna find a way in the budget.
Yeah, we'll get it, you know, hopefully, we can get it as quick as we can, uh, but, yeah. I don't think we're actually voting on it. Are we voting on it? Yeah, the lowest and best quote is, they're actually both the same metal detectors, but the highest quote is actually from Garrett, the actual distributor. And the one that's lower is from, I mean, not the distributor, the actual manufacturer, so the one that's lower is the distributor. So the one that's lowest is five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, and that's what I'm asking for, they're both the same.
Okay, so he want authorization to buy this walkthrough metal detector at the cost of five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, which is the lowest and best quote?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Taylor made the motion, is there a second? Mr. Bates seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, item twelve C of search and seizure forfeiture policy, we don't have that yet.
No, well, and I, and I don't think the chief was aware of the conversations that had gone on, so apologies to him in that regard, but I know the mayor and Ms. Kellam and Zach and I have been, this is largely governed by statute, and, you know, you can always policy yourselves to death, I tend to think when you've got a good procedure laid out by statute, you should just follow the statute and not sort of unnecessarily complicate it. That having been said, I think the initial concern was what to do with the seized money, whether you need it a separate bank account. And then there's the additional concern that Mr. Kitty and I have been looking at as to whether, you know, if you have a seized vehicle for something like that, for example, or even a seized weapon, I guess, the question is gonna be whether or not the police department or the city ever intends to use it, or whether it would just be seized for evidentiary reasons, you know, something that's associated with commission of crime. Um, I don't know that there would be an intent from the police department to use some of these things that y'all are seizing, you've got your standard-issue weapons and, uh, you know, I don't think you would, an intent, so if you're not gonna use them for, you know, the police department or municipal purposes, I'm not necessarily sure a policy would be necessary, but we wanted to discuss it with y'all because we didn't want to just come in and give y'all a policy and say adopt this.
I don't think, it sounds to me like we don't need a policy, however, we do need some guidance from you guys to give to our police officers and our court staff and Ms. Kellam and Mr. Paul, so that they know what the rules are, and they know how to handle a seized item. If we don't need a formal policy because it's statutorily prescribed, that's fine, but I would ask you to write them a memo or a letter or something to, to outline what the rules are so that they make sure they follow.
Okay, I think-
Well, I'll, well, also going forward, Mayor, you know, I'll take some of Blaine out, if I, you know, I'll pick up the phone and call it out.
Okay, well, John and Mr. Kitty are gonna get you something in writing so that you can utilize that to kind of govern how we handle these things, and obviously, if you have questions after that, reach out to them, but give them some guidance, because right now, they don't really-
Sure. Chief, and I apologize if I'm confusing this piece of work I've done for somebody else, but if I can, you, I remember in the memorandum, how the different ways, weapons, seized weapons-
Yeah, we only got that from them.
Okay, that's what I said.
We did get that, that was very helpful.
Okay.
The notion of a policy came from our auditor, that was where that whole idea came from, is that we needed a policy in place, is what he had suggested.
You're talking about your, your individual auditor, not the state auditor's office, okay, I do think, excuse you, you could email us that.
Yes, so that's, that's where that came from.
Well, if you feel like you need that for the purposes of your annual audit, we can give y'all something, but it's probably gonna largely mirror the advice we're gonna give the chief in the memorandum, and it's gonna largely mirror, uh, state statute.
And for the city clerk's office, we just want to ensure that when we seize money and we seize items like vehicles, that if they do intend to use them for undercover purposes or whatnot, but they're added to fixed assets properly, that if they're not needed, or, you know, they want to auction them off, it, it's not, we're not surprised by it in order, you know, we need to have a process and procedure laid out so that everybody feels comfortable.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do first, obviously, is, is put together something in writing for guidance for the police department in your office, and then maybe ask the auditor if that suffices, or if not, we can convert that to some sort of policy that's adoptable for the purposes of your audit.
I appreciate it.
Chief, anything else?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited, I want y'all to come by if you get a chance. We got our micro market today. Like a kid, y'all know what, do y'all know what a micro market is?
No, saw the picture there.
It's like a vending machine, you got a drink, you got a drink machine, and you got something over here that's got snacks. Of course, I don't have to watch the guys, but it's kind of like a, you know, you have to, you scan it like you're at a set, sub checkout, and you pay for it. you have to scan it like you're at a set-up checkout, and you pay for it with a debit card.
You know, we have a 5K coming up in March.
Well, if you noticed, I've lost about 20 bucks. And I've been walking 30 minutes every day, so I'm good there.
Awesome.
My micro is kind of messes the whole thing up.
No, I'm a wall, I'm a wall.
It's like a mini market.
I'm a wall right on mine, go to the gym.
Promise?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, anybody sign our public comment?
Yes. Katie? Do you want to address the board?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Katie's with the Yandell Show.
Yandell Show. Sir, your name?
Sir, my name is Claude Ponce. I'm with you. Good evening to the board. We are looking to buy a liquor store on Highway 51. We just want to make sure if the city would allow us to relocate it. I know there are some guidelines. It has to be 4,000 feet from two liquor stores, the distance. And right now, the distance between Bear Creek Liquor Store and Cottillos is less than 4,000 feet. But it was before the city was incorporated and all that. But we're willing to, the lot that we own right now, will move that liquor store a little bit far. Like, it will increase the distance between those two liquor stores. So, it's because that liquor store right now is, the building is really small. And if we want to buy it, we just want to make it a little bit bigger because it's less than 2,000 square feet. So, before we talk to the guys to, like, buy this stuff, we just want to make sure the city will allow us to relocate the liquor store.
Okay. So, here's, we have rules, you know, and process for these types of things. And they start with seeing that man right there in that blue shirt, all right, Mr. Hall. And he's the guy that can guide you through the process that would be required through the city. Probably will have to go before planning and zoning, and there are steps that have to be taken. So, the Board's not going to be able to tell you, yes, we'll approve it, or no, we won't approve it tonight, because we've got these processes that you need to go through. Okay, so if you've seen Mr. Hall, he can give you some direction.
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Hall, and we have told him about the lot that we own. And it was brought to my attention, this city is not told, like, before, in 2016, we changed that lot from C1 to C2 already. So, it is approved, but we have to give all the documents to, I spoke to Ms. Lindsay this morning, and we have to give you all the documents from the Madison County.
But you'll give them, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you, you told me, because I don't know the math, because the city don't have the correct zoning of the lot right now, so it was approved at the C2. So, we will submit the documents as soon as possible, and then I will contact Mr. William, and we'll start on that. Because, you know, buying a business and all that, it's not like, it's going to take some time, but we just want to make sure that city will allow us to, you know, move into the bigger building than it is right now.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that, and I understand your concerns and your motivations. But what has to happen is you have to start with Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then it is a process that it goes through. And the Board's not going to vote on those types of things or give anybody any kind of advanced approval or tell you tonight that it's not going to happen. We have to go through the process, and that's why you need to see Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, I got the list. Nope, that's it. Okay, at this time, we do have the need for a brief executive session. I'm going to ask then for a motion to enter into closed sessions to determine the need for executives. I made the motion, is there a second? Mr. Slade seconded, all in favor? Okay.